Okay, great. So I think we'll start tonight's meeting for the planning board. As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm acting as the chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morse?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Larry Murphy?
Here.
Thank you, Larry. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Woody Knight. Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. Town Council, Brian Wiener?
Brian Wiener is present.
Thank you, Brian. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Here.
Thank you. Emily Noble?
Here.
Thank you. Anticipated speakers or presenters on the agenda, please respond in affirmative. Glenn DiArmond?
Here.
Great, thank you. Bob Grasso?
Here.
Thank you. Scott Kinter?
He's here.
Okay.
Here.
Great, thank you, Scott. Christopher York?
I'm here.
Thank you. Eva and Fred Jackman?
They're here.
Okay.
Yes, we're here.
Very good, thank you. Jill Mann?
Here.
Thank you. Stephen Sawyer?
I haven't seen him yet.
He will be attending, Mr. Pecos.
Okay, great, thank you. Adam True? Okay.
I'm guessing they will be later since they're later in the agenda.
Yep, Scott Cameron, probably the same.
Yeah.
And Douglas DeShenz? Okay. I have some introductory remarks here. Good evening. This is October 21st, 2020. This is an open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board. It is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order supersedes, I'm sorry, suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in public accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which can be found posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the planning board section of the town's website. And which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 8327141306 or by calling 1-929-2056099 and entering the meeting ID that was just.
Pete, you're muted.
Yeah, Pete.
How did that happen? And when did that happen?
I have no idea, just a second ago.
Okay. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and or telephone conference. The meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. We have some ground rules for the meeting and before we turn to the agenda, let's just go over some of those ground rules so that we can have a clear and effective conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minutes. As a chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of members inviting each by name to provide any common question or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone, which is star six on a phone toggle to mute or unmute or on your computer, the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured on the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair. With regards to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the raise hand function. For video conference participants, this can, you can access this function by clicking on the participants button shown in the menu below the photo gallery at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Hover your cursor over this area if you don't see it. A list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of this participant area, you will see an option to click to raise your hand. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participants list. You may rename yourself by going into more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, you can use your key, your phone keypad while in the Zoom meeting. Raise hand is by hitting star nine. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed. The system lists in order who have, who have first raised their hands. Each participant will be called upon to provide his, her name and address. And then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of all the raised hand columns and again afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal or questions of concerns, they will be read into the record and again, the participant, applicant, representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if issues raised have not yet been addressed. Each call, each vote tonight will be by roll call and my vice chair will be certain to give me a kick if I forget that. So following our open remarks, I'm going to go right into our agenda. We do have a number of public hearings this evening at 7:15. And they will be dealt with in the order that they are posted on the agenda. Since we do have three hearings, we're again going to try to limit our hearing sessions and I'm going to say we're going to try to limit them again to 30 to 45 minutes maximum if possible as courtesy to applicants and members of the public in attendance as well as the board members. Okay, I think that takes care of opening remarks. So let's, let's see what our agenda looks like. So I'll pop over here. And first on our agenda, we have submission appearances from Glenn DiArmond, submission of an AR plan from lot division of 243 High Road. And a lot line change on 243 High Road map R27 lot 61 owner Glenn and Jennifer DiArmond and 247 High Road map R27 62A owner Carol LaCroix, applicant Glenn and Jennifer DiArmond. Glenn, I think it is you. If you wouldn't mind.
Yes, it is.
Great.
Okay, I guess I start. So first of all, yes, I'm Glenn DiArmond. My wife and I, wife Jennifer and I live at 243 High Road. We're submitting an A and R lot line adjustment plan to create one new building lot. We'll do this by splitting off roughly 2.3 acres from our existing property while also doing a land swap with our neighbor Carol LaRock. She's the 247 High Road. So that land, the land that Carol LaRock is on is actually shown on the plan as proposed lot 1B. So the purpose of that land swap is actually to provide more efficient access from High Road to the proposed lot that we're looking to do. And actually, it also gives Carol a section of land that's more useful to her. As you can probably see by the trailer and shed that's located on that piece of the property.
So I'm going to ask Martha, Martha, do you want to pop this plan up?
Yes.
Thanks so much. This will help with the discussion, Glenn.
Sure.
All right, can you all see that?
Momentarily, yes, we can.
There we go.
And is that big enough?
That looks pretty good. You might want to advance it north a little bit on the screen. There you go.
There we go.
Perfect.
Can you see?
Yes. Thank you.
Glasses. Yeah, so if you've got any questions, the folks from Millennium Engineering were able to be here at the meeting tonight. So if you have any questions, I'd do my best to answer them.
So do you want to just kind of go over again, quick description now that we have the image in front of us?
Okay. Where, actually where the cursor is, that proposed lot three, that's our current property along with the proposed lot two. Lot 1B is the lot that belongs to Carol LaRock. So what we're doing is taking 125 feet or 120, can't actually see that. We're taking the frontage and then running a drive from High Road into the lot two. The idea behind this land swap is if you can see, that triangle of land is currently belongs to Carol. And the access to the lot would definitely not be as efficient. So I'm giving her a piece of the property which is, I can't actually read the number or read the letter, but that piece of the property towards the back of her property is going to her and we're swapping it with that triangle.
Right, so parcel X currently belongs to Carol. That's 2,075 square feet. So that will be going to the DiArmond's and parcel Z, which is 2,919 square feet is going from the DiArmond's to Carol as part of this process. So she's actually getting a slight increase in area. Very slight.
Anything else, Glenn, or is that what you have to?
That's, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, great. Martha, what are our comments on this?
Well, we've gone through a couple of rounds of review, so the, all the pertinent things that's got the required frontage, the new lot has the required 125 feet. It has more than sufficient area and contiguous upland. The remaining area for proposed lot three has more than sufficient area and, and contiguous upland. And Carol's frontage is not changed and her area is increasing slightly.
Okay. So it looks like it met all the thresholds it needs to achieve for an A and R?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let me see if there are any board members that have any questions. Larry, do you have any questions, sir?
I don't believe so.
Okay. George, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just confirm for me that the access area for lot two from the highway, you know, it's from the highway I rode is about 30 feet up to 50 feet. Is that correct? It's not measured off anywhere.
I think it's about, I haven't measured it and there isn't a dimension on here. I think it's about 40 feet. Glenn, do you know?
That's, that would roughly be it. If you actually want to know, I have a copy of the plan here in a scale. I could actually measure it off for you. If you'd like.
No, that's fine. As long as there's plenty of room coming in.
Oh, there, yes.
And here's the proposed driveway entry, which will be off of High Road. So I believe Glenn that you'll have to get a curb cut.
Yes, from the state.
Okay. Anything else, George?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Thank you. I'm pretty, pretty well set. So I would, I'd, I'd welcome a vote to endorse this, a motion to endorse this A and R.
I move to authorize the chairman to endorse the subject plan.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Leslie. Any discussion on the motion? All right, roll call, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yeah.
Wonderful. And the chair is in favor as well. Great. Martha, you'll take care of all the rest?
I will take care of all the rest and Glenn, I'll coordinate with Pete and getting it signed and let you know when the MyLok can be picked up.
Great, thank you very much, folks.
Great, thanks, Glenn. Good luck.
Sure, thanks.
All right, I think we are going to have an on-time departure for our public hearings. I'll do a little bit of talk because we have a minute. We have three public hearings. The first public hearing will be definitive subdivision application for 23 Shandell Drive Extension map. U06 lot 124, 126 owner applicant Scott and Patricia Kinter, lot 126 and Christopher and Sarah Harrison. Lot 124. So I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing for Shandell Drive.
And there's a second, I hope.
Second.
There we go. Leslie, would you mind the public notice and let Martha will pop, pop that up on the screen for you?
It's here now. Can you see it?
I can.
Okay.
A town of legal notice, town of Newbury Planning Board, public hearing notice. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, October 21st, 2020 at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually via Zoom to consider an application submitted by Scott and Patricia Kinter and Christopher and Sarah Harrison for approval of a definitive subdivision plan as shown on the drawings entitled definitive subdivision plan located in Newbury, Massachusetts, 23 Shandell Drive Extension dated July 29, 2020 as received was revised September 8th, 2020 prepared by Engineering Land Services LLC for Scott and Patricia Kinter. The proposed subdivision consists of 0.95 plus or minus acre single family law to be assessed by, accessed by means of an extension by Shandell Drive Newbury Port. The existing law is shown in Newbury Cessar map U06 as lot 126. Copies of the application are on file with the town clerk and in the planning office. 12 Kent Way, Suite 101 by Field Mass. A digital or hard copy may be requested by emailing planningboard@townofnewbury.org. The plans and application may also be viewed on the planning board section of the town's website. For more information, contact planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposal of the subdivision should appear at the designated time and place. Interested persons may participate in the meeting from their computer, tablet, or smartphone at https://us02web.zoom.us/j83271413056 or by telephone by calling 1-929-2056099 US and using meeting ID 832714103056 or may watch the meeting live on local access cable television, Channel 9 or at www.tncTV.org. Peter Pecos, Chair and Newbury Planning Board, your report daily news, October 5th, 2020 and October 12th, 2020.
Thank you, Leslie. And I appreciate those tired eyes there. That was perfectly done. So Martha, we just need to confirm that the tear sheets and certified mail receipts were received?
Yes, they were.
Okay, great. So I'd welcome the applicant Scott Kinter or engineer Bob Grasso to make a presentation.
Thank you. I think I'll start and I'll be very quick and keep it high level and Bob can again, details of the plan. I know we're pressed for time, but my name is Scott Kinter and I'm, my wife and I are the applicants for the definitive subdivision plan application for 23 Shandell Drive Extension. First off, I'd like to, like to thank Martha for guiding us through the planning process and for always responding to us, you know, expeditiously. It's been, as we all know, it's, we're in a tough environment and as we all can see, we're still on Zoom. But in any event, I've been working on the project planning for approximately 70 years. I acquired the property back in August of 2017. We hope to gain an approval, you know, from this board so that we may build a single family home with a detached garage on the property for, for our family. We've been through the conservation process already. We successfully gained board approval with, with an order of conditions. We've worked with the city of Newbury Port's water sewer and public works department. And we have permission to tie into their existing utilities on Shandell, provided we get subdivision approval you know, from Newbury and after completing municipal utility plan review and ultimately their approval of the plan and, and means and methods. And finally, I've had, I've had several meetings with many of the neighbors over the last couple of years and I'd like to thank them for really collaborating with me. Many of their, their recommendations on utility pass, landscape buffers at the property lines were very much welcomed and, and we've incorporated them you know, into the, into the project plan. So again, thank you for the opportunity to sit before you and present and I'm going to hand it over to Bob.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, Martha, can I have a chair screen for sheet two?
Yes, I'll make you a co-host right now. So you should be all set.
You see that?
Yes.
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 Okay. For the record, my name's Bob Grasso from Engineering Land Services. We're filing a definitive subdivision for lot 28 located at 23 Shandell Drive Extension. Or proposing to do is extend the existing Shandell Drive into the Kinter property shown right here by creating a right of way which will be private, which is a total frontage of, let's see if I have it on there. 12761 and that will be eventually, if it's approved, there will be a private, private way. So the town will have no maintenance or any, you know, anything that they have to do with it. We're just extending the, the existing pavement into a driveway to the proposed dwelling. It'll be a single family four bedroom dwelling shown in brown right here. We filed, as Scott had stated before, we filed a conservation, we have an order of conditions which was issued in nine of 2019, 2019 and an A and R plan which was endorsed by your board. Let's see, 0108, 2020. So we, we acquired a parcel, parcel A over here from the Harrisons right here, parcel A to create the required area that we needed because we're minusing the area that we needed for the frontage right here. The driveway would be the only pavement proposed for the site, which would go to the proposed garage, detached garage and a walkway to the proposed dwelling. This has been reviewed by Joe Swacker for the top, for the peer review. I received that the other day. Do the timeframe, I could not do the revisions, but they're very, I talked to Joe today. They're very minded revisions is basically detailing the swells that we propose with conservation, putting some spot grades on, on the water, water quality grass channel swells shown here, here and on here. We're also proposing a row of elevities 25 along this plot line. We're also proposing a stone wall for the no, no disturb zone for the conservation along, along the line right here to deter any future disturbance towards the, the pond and the wetland, which is shown in blue. I'm not sure if I'm doing this right, but I'm sure it's grabbing like that. Not sure. Well, here we go. Sorry about that. Little new to this. Let's see. Why is it not grabbing? Okay, here we go. Here we go. Other than that, if you have any questions, where we're going to be tying into, as Scott had stated before, to the Newbury Port, City of Newbury Municipal Services, we're going to have town water, town sewer, town, under, underground gas and underground electric and cable, all, all service from Newbury Port. Basically, there will be no burden on, on the town of Newbury for services. Scott will be taking his own trash to the Newbury Port dump. It was and Scott have been in coordination with the police and fire department for, for safety concerns. And that's basically it.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Martha, do we have any concerns or anything that's popping up on your radar screen?
I have actually not received any, any comments either from town boards or departments. As Bob said, it's already gone through the concom and gotten their approval and has an order of conditions. And I have not received any public comment either, although there was requests for plans. So at this point, as Bob said, Joe has reviewed, had some, some minor comments. I know that there are a number of waivers that are being requested on this. I don't know if this is the time to go through all those waivers. Or?
Might it make sense after we set our next hearing to go through the waivers and we have a little bit of input from our different boards?
Yeah, it's kind of what I'm thinking too.
Okay. Okay, all right. With that framework, I'd like to ask board members if they have any comments or questions at this time. So I'm going to start with Larry first.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand. So basically you're creating the extension of Shandell in order to get your frontage. So you're using three of the four dimensions on the extension to get your required frontage. Is that right?
Yes, it is. We're the three-sided, the three sides, not the, not the one that would go towards Shandell Drive. That would be eliminated. So just the basically three sides that would be on our property and that.
Right, but the only, the only construction is going to be the driveway, right?
Yes, the only construction would be the extension of the, the driveway off the existing paved roadway right now.
And have you thought about petitioning the ZBA for a variance and using the existing frontage on Shandell?
I really don't like to go for variances when, when we can prove that we can do it through a definitive subdivision process. Like I say, it would be a private way. The town, it wouldn't burden the town for any services to Scott's lot. Like I said, we, we've taken all the precautions to protect the, the wetlands and the pond and at the rear of the property. And we've also taken, during the conservation filing, we've taken all the, the abutting properties, all their inputs and we've addressed all their issues.
Yeah, and Larry, if I, if I may, you know, we've worked in addition to meeting with the Newbury Port DPW, you know, for water and sewer. We've also met a number of times regarding, you know, snow removal. So right now, the pavement ends, I think you can see it right at the dotted or hashed line. And what Newbury Port does now is they basically, you know, plow, you know, Shandell and, you know, bring the snow down onto my property. Just and kind of push it, you know, over the Newbury Port, Newbury line into Newbury, again, onto my property. By, you know, creating this right away, you know, it allows them to, to continue on, you know, with, with the snow removal process. And if you see, we've gotten, you know, a couple of big drainage areas. Bob, if you could point them out.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, so that would be a, I think we have it noted on the plan as a snow.
Snow storage area for the use of the Newbury Port DPW. When we have that, we've talked to the departments now. I personally sat down with the, with Scott and with
Snow storage area for the use of the Newburyport DPW. When we have that, we've talked to the departments now. I've personally sat down with the with Scott and with. The water and the sewer department. Not only through emails, but we actually had a meeting at their DPW building.
Yeah, and it was very important as well. You know, meeting with the the neighbors. The closest, you know, neighbor, you know, to the to the entrance or to the proposed driveway is. A woman who actually works in healthcare and many times, you know, during blizzards or snow events, she needs to. You know, get to. You know, Boston Hospital where she works. So we were, we 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 did our best at, I'm really trying to. Really design something that would, you know, actually work not only on plan. You know, but in 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 really. Beyond that, because we need to construct it, construct it and needs to work.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. George, do you have any questions, sir?
No, thank you, Peter.
George, Leslie, do you have any questions at this time?
No, I don't.
Okay, great. Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, great. And I'm okay right now. So Martha, if we could, or Bob, if we could stop the screen share, that'd be great. And what I'd like to do is kind of open this up for public comments and questions. So if you have a question or a comment that you'd like to make, I'm gonna ask that you raise your hand using the raise hand function. And then Martha will keep track of who's gonna be addressing when. So go ahead, Martha.
So we have one raised hand so far. It's from Wendy Lovett.
So you will need to unmute yourself.
I think she accidentally muted her again.
Hi there. This is actually Peter Levitt. I had a kind of one principal question here. And apologies for not perhaps referencing the right. The right terms for the lot and all of experience here, but we are at ten Fairview Avenue. And the back of our property backs up to what I think is. Lots one.
Twenty three A.
One twenty three A. And I'm just wondering if there's anything about this development that would impact kind of the the non-buildable lot, which is one twenty three A.
Scott, would you like to answer that?
Yes, sure. I mean, there would. There'd be no impact. And yeah, I mean, it's 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 independent, you know, bring clear of that particular lot.
So there's no, there's nothing, there's no. Change in the way that that lot could be accessed or in the future or anything that would. Enable that space to be built on in the future as a result of this effort. That's all.
I I mean, I I couldn't answer that. You know, it certainly isn't. It certainly isn't in in my plan. You know, we plan to build a single family home with a detached garage and. I couldn't or wouldn't think. You know, anybody would be able to access, you know, that lot, you know, I think it's on the other side of the of the pond. Or the wetlands. I mean, you'd have a wetlands crossing and. You know, I'm not an engineer, maybe Bob, you could look at that, but I think it would need. I would possibly need some further study, but it's not, it's not in our plan. You know, our plan is is to genuinely. You know, build a single family home on that lot to live in it and to reside in Newbury. You know, for a very, very long time.
And it'll be the less impact on the lot going extending Shandell Drive. If you go to the rear lot, you're crossing wetlands. It's it's environmentally, the impact would be significant. Compared to what we're proposing, whereas the access is not crossing any wetlands. Alls we're basically doing is buffer work. We're not working within the twenty five foot, no cut, no, no zone to the existing wetland. This is the least impact on the lot and the and the best access to the lot.
Okay, that's great. I guess the other only, I mean, can I address the same question to the board as well?
You can address the question to the board. I'm not sure the board is going to have an answer for you, since this is the first time that we have seen this application. So if you don't feel that your answer has been addressed, I can ask Martha to see if there's any way to look into it. To see if there's anything further from our perspective that we would have.
I mean, Mike, just to be very clear, the the intent of my question is that the non-buildable aspect of that lot remains the same. So that there is nothing that gets built behind the property that we are. I'm all, you know, I think that this is, it's great that there should be another. Lot that Scott's proposing. I just want to make sure that doesn't do anything to for to expose that non-buildable lot.
Okay, Martha, I think I inadvertently muted you when I was trying to let somebody in. My apologies.
For. It's okay. I'm just looking at the plan here to see which lot you're talking about. So you said one twenty three A.
Yeah, it's directly behind Fairview.
Right, yeah. No, I know which I know which one it is, and it actually has a tiny bit of frontage on Fairview. But I think it actually it gets its its access off of Ross Lane. Is that correct?
Which one? This lot?
One twenty three A. It's owned by by the Ronders. It's for our Fairview Avenue.
Yes.
This lot has no impact on that lot at all.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see anything in this in this project that would grant any access to. To that lot. If they wanted to do anything with that, I think it would have to be through some other mechanism.
Okay.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for participating and being here this evening. Thank you. All right, Martha, do you see anyone else out there that would like to? Ask a question?
I'm not seeing any blue raised hands. I'm gonna scan through. Yeah, I I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, all right. Very good. Then what I'll do is I'll move to the board to see if there's any discussions the board has at this point in time as as to what's been presented. Larry, do you want to drive the bus for a little bit?
I I think I'm all set. I don't have anything further at this point.
Okay, George?
No comments. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, Leslie?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, and Woody?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Martha, with regards to our next steps, where do we want to go?
Well, we know that some revisions need to be made to the plan based on Joe's review comments. So that's definitely continuance in any case. And again, I don't know whether whether you want to have Bob just. Read the waivers tonight or take that up next time. They are included in the application package.
Can I just say one thing about?
Sure.
I talked to Joe today. They're very minor revisions. He said if we continue to the next public hearing. He'd have plenty of time to view. They're very, very minor changes. It's not any concept change of the plan. It's just. Detailing some spot grading on the swells that we propose with the conservation condition. Just wanted some more detailed grading. But the concepts are there. The the design's not gonna change. It's just added information of spot grades. And Joe said he would have plenty of time to have this reviewed and a letter to the board for the next meeting.
Okay, so peer review will be coming. Well, and we're still waiting from other departments, but we have a couple minutes. So Bob, what are you looking for for waivers?
The full construction of a roadway. Basically, that was it. I had to list all the waivers. It's a pretty long letter. It's basically the the. All construction, the roadway, environmental analysis. Since a single lot. Subdivision, the board has the authority to waive that under your regulations. Basically, every construction detail. In your regulations.
Just a couple, huh? All right.
The long, that's a long list.
All right, okay, okay. So I guess we'll wait for departments to weigh in, Martha. And then we can look at that a little bit deeper. Okay. Then let's let's take a look to see when a good time to plug this into our calendar is, Martha, do you want to? Our schedule?
All right, here it here it is. Are you able to see that?
We can. Okay. So. We're looking tentatively, the tenth of November. That's that's one of our regular meetings. Is that right?
No, that's why it's an orange. That's a like board meeting for the golf center, joint meeting for the golf center.
Okay, okay. So then we're looking at the eighteenth.
Yeah, the ones with gray headers are our regular meetings.
Sorry to get confusing. Okay, so with regards to the eighteenth. So I would say let's grab a time now and plop that in there. Does that make good sense? With that, I have to entertain a motion from one of my board members to continue this public hearing to that November eighteenth at seven fifteen.
Second.
Okay, so that was Larry that moved it and Leslie that seconded. Okay, on the motion and discussion, Larry?
Yes.
This is just for any discussion or discussion?
No, I'm sorry.
Discussion. Leslie, no discussion?
No.
Okay, Woody, no discussion. Okay, great. On the motion, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Great. George, how say you?
Yes.
Great. Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
And Woody, how say you?
Yes.
And the chair also is in favor. Great. So we'll put that on our November eighteenth, seven fifteen lineup. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, continuing on our agenda. Our next public hearing would be a continuance for sixty eight Green Street. So I have an entertaining motion to open.
I moved open the public hearing.
Right, and there's a second. Great. Okay, I'm going to ask the applicant engineer if there's any new materials or any responses to Joe Swarker's review letter of ten five twenty. Is that Chris?
Yep, this is Chris with Millennium Engineering. I have a revised set of plans. I dropped off with Martha earlier this week. Me.
Do you want me to make your?
Desktop, yes.
Okay, let me find you. Okay, you should be all set.
Right, there we go. Well, I would just zoom in. One minor change to the plans for Joe's comment. It was just a dot in the eye crossing the T type of thing. He wanted us to just show the inverted elevation of the pipe coming out of the constructed wetland. We've got it labeled on the. Other end, but we do not have it labeled on the interior end. So that's been labeled. And then the detail. Like, as I can show you the detail. The. Yes, the detail just shows the same invert labeled. That was it. Nothing else changed on the plans, no design changes, just that minor change. That was it.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I'm just gonna run down to see if there's any questions from board members from where we are and that we might have. So Larry, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, George?
No.
Leslie?
Oh.
Woody?
No.
Okay, and I don't have any questions. Martha, do we have some written comments that we need to note?
The only thing that I received. Was from Ray Andrews, and it was a a concern about the. The radius at the right of way at the property line because it crosses his driveway easement. He and I did have a conversation about it, and I noted that on the plan, there is a construction entry which is pretty well defined. He was concerned about construction vehicles going back and forth. So I think I believe that he is set with that. And the other thing I did have a conversation with him this afternoon. And apparently, there is a possibility that he will be acquiring parcel Y.
Okay, and parcel parcel Y is the one that has that little point that comes down. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, right there. So what I don't know, and I think that I think that's contingent on approval of the the subdivision. So I I'm not quite sure what the sequencing would be. I think probably subdivision approval and then an A and R plan to to actually make that transfer. But it was new information, so I haven't been able to follow up on on that.
Okay, great. Chris, I think you can stop screen sharing for now.
Okay.
Thanks very much. Okay. Do we have any public questions or comments? Do you see anyone that wants to be recognized at this time?
I am not seeing any raised hands in the precipice list, and I'll just scan. I'm not seeing anybody waving either.
Okay. So the one outstanding matter that we have, the HOA documents. So do you want to just touch base on those real quick for an update, Martha?
So they were sent to to town council. Last week, actually, and I have not gotten any comments back from her. Based on what she had advised the board at the last meeting about another subdivision, one option might be to actually make approval. Make that make approval of those can a condition of approval of the subdivision. So that they would need to be approved before a building permit was issued and recorded at the registry before certificate of occupancy. So I don't know if that's something that the board would feel comfortable with. Or. If if you prefer to have some some comments back from council on those documents. Before the final decision.
Larry, let me ask you your opinion on this.
Well, I think we're gonna need time to draft a decision anyway, Martha. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I I don't I don't see any point in taking the vote today. If we kick this over and let Martha do her thing, and perhaps by then we'll have input from town council. If not, I think the. I'd be comfortable with the approach that was suggested of a contingent vote.
Okay, great. Anybody else on the board have a feeling about anything?
Agree with Larry.
Okay, George?
Likewise.
Okay, Woody?
No, no questions.
All right, great. So Martha, I guess it'll be time to start to draft some decisions.
Okay. All right, so I think based on previous discussions, I've got a sense of the board and so can start drafting based on that.
All right.
If there are any conditions that you all can think of right now.
Performance guarantee. We don't recall if we've discussed that.
We have not yet, I don't think.
It is, okay, it is, do we have a? Well.
That's usually based on an estimate. From the applicant. For construction costs. So I don't think we have seen. Seen that.
Larry, any other thoughts?
No, no, I mean, I'm mindful that this is that this is going to remain a private way. I just don't want to leave any loose loose ends out there.
Okay.
Right. And generally, we've we've done a couple of different things. One would be. A bond, one would be a tripartite agreement with a bank and the town and the applicant. Another option would actually be to put a, you know, covenant on the lots so that they couldn't be. You know, couldn't be released, or they would be released during the process sort of one by one.
Probably the least expensive for the applicant.
Yes. Yeah. So Chris or Fred and Eva, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that, what what form you'd like the. So Chris or Fred and Eva, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that, what, what form you'd like the performance guarantee to take.
I will leave that up to Fred and Eva. I think the, the last option sounds the best, the, the least costly for them.
Yeah, what happens, what happens sometimes is that it gets converted at some point. A couple of lots will get released when a certain amount of work is done, and then that might get converted to something else, or, or just be release of the lots all the way through.
I thought that was the way that we had discussed it in the first place.
Okay, I know it had been mentioned before, but not, not settled on, I don't think. So we could, we could draft it with that.
Any other guidance you need from us, Martha?
Um. I guess at this point, if there are no other conditions that anybody has, you know, right at the top of your minds, what I can do is I'll, I'll go back and look at some previous subdivision approvals and, you know, pull, pull some out that are relevant to this and also go back through the discussions that we've had about certain things that might want to be conditioned.
Okay.
And I'll include all of those in the draft that gets sent to the board for review.
Okay. Very good, very good. So we have some HOA documents that need to be reviewed and comments back to you, and we'll start drafting. Okay, so let's look for a date to continue our public hearing.
We'll go back up to.
And I think I know where it's gonna land.
All right, so we've got Chondell Drive coming in here.
So does it make sense to slide that in there too? Because it should be a pretty straightforward.
Should be.
So that would be November 18th. Okay, that being the case, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the November 18th at 7:15. Thank you, Leslie. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Larry, no?
No discussion.
George, no discussion? Discussion and discussion?
No.
Okay, on the motion, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Okay, George, how say you?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
And Woody, how say you?
Yes.
Very good. So we're set, and we're good until the 18th at 7:15. Let's see, 7:53, okay. Continuing, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Fred. Eva, continuing on our agenda, we have a continued public hearing, 105 High Road. I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing for 105 High Road.
Thanks, there's a second. Great, okay. At this time, I'll ask the applicant representative Jill Mann and Steve Sawyer to present any new materials to us.
Good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of Tupper Properties, the applicant in connection with this OSRD application. We had, in fact, presented additional information based on some comments that the board had received at the prior hearing. In addition to that, we did present additional information relative to the safe and adequate access of a couple of the lots shown on the yield plan. Basically, what the letter, we have delivered a letter on October 7th, setting forth what we would hope to be the expectation of the deliberations for this evening, essentially to evaluate the yield plan in its present form based on that letter that had been submitted and again on October 7th, as well as the letter we had submitted to the planning board in response to the fire department's email communication with this board, which I believe the fire department had clarified its response. And in effect concluded that the project, as well as those two driveways that are at the rear of the property on the yield plan are in fact compliant with the regulations and are adequate and safe. So at this point, I don't know, Mr. Pecos, if you would prefer, Dr. Pecos, if you would prefer for me to run through those comments in the letter, because those are directly related to Mr. Powell's allegations that there's something in the bylaw that didn't allow us to use units in order to establish density and/or allow the board to consider units. In response to that, I did deliver a couple of, actually three other OSRD plans, as well as gave you just my understanding of how you would actually interpret those words. And then I also did ask for some additional items. For example, there's a public comment that's simply inflammatory and defamatory to be stricken because the person doesn't exist. I can't find them. So how would you like to proceed?
It's up to you.
Okay, well, did everybody read that letter then that I had submitted relative to the communication about units? And would the board actually agree that the way in which the OSRD bylaw is written, that it applies to units as well as lots? It's just a matter of whether or not you can develop two family homes or not.
Well, the first thing I'll say is the board has received the letter, so they had opportunity to review it. And what, what I would do is I would to, to direct to our council to help us with the determination of units versus lots and for clarification. So, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again for people watching and participating remotely, Brian Winter from Town Council's office. Attorney Mann, yes, we've looked at your letter and we heard the public comments, and I think as there was some discussion around at the last public meeting, we talked about sort of a little bit about the history of the bylaw, some experience that the town had had, some of the parameters for the board making that determination. And I think I highlighted a couple of provisions of the bylaw that had specific language concerning the whether or not it was dwelling, whether or not it was a unit, and how those terms were used throughout the bylaw. So I've provided some guidance to the board in terms of how to analyze that question. We discussed a little bit about some of the comments from a former member who was a participant, and I think the drafting and had some knowledge of the, the history and intent and purposes behind it as well, and how to integrate that. So with that, I think the question ultimately falls back on the board in terms of how it chooses to interpret and apply that provision. You know, in this context, so if I can just summarize very briefly what I had said previously. Your bylaw contains a number of references with respect to that equation, and in most instances, it refers to both units and dwellings, and in other cases, it refers simply to units. So it appears from the plain language, units is, is the quantum that the board needs to consider, not necessarily the dwelling, or whether it's coupled or uncoupled as a two-family or, or single family. Notwithstanding that, the board can also be guided by, you know, its experience, its knowledge of its own bylaws, it's been applied in other cases. And also driven by what the intent behind the bylaw is with respect to an OSRD development, and whether or not what's being asked for in this case is consistent or inconsistent or something else entirely. So I think, you know, armed with that sort of interpretive framework, it's really up to the board at this point to determine whether or not it's comfortable going with comparing units to units, or, or two families to two families, or, or what makes the most sense, you know, considering those different factors.
Thank you, Brian. So I think I'd like to just start the discussion. Larry, do you want to start the conversation?
Well, it's, it's an interesting question, certainly. And, you know, Mr. Powell's insight into it was greatly appreciated and a big help. That said, I, if we were starting from scratch, and this was the first time that this board, and I don't necessarily mean this board is currently constituted. We're, we're looking at this, I, I could see, you could probably interpret it either way. I think in this case, though, we should follow prior precedent, and my understanding is that we have based on the, the discussion on units in the past, and attorney man has cited several instances, and that's my understanding that those are accurate. So I would be inclined to, to agree with attorney man on this point.
Okay, thank you, Larry. George, your thoughts?
Yeah, units, I think, is the proper way to go. There's, they're not, the lots are not dwellings, the unit, the buildings are dwellings, but entire matter is a unit.
Okay, so also for, for unit configuration, Leslie, what is your feeling?
Um, no comment this time.
Okay, so you don't have a feeling whether it should be, we should be following the design of unit or the design of dwelling in our determination?
Units were, would be determining whether they're single or multi. So I guess units would be the way I would lean.
Okay, great. And Woody, what are your thoughts on that?
I guess units. I guess units. I'll go, I would go with units on that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Woody. So I think we're kind of forming a, a position of, of this situation. And again, I think Larry, you brought something very, very, you know, significant to the table. If, you know, this were a different time, and if we were, you know, maybe constructing this in a different manner, we might have a different perspective in doing this, but since we're following a conceptual component in what we have followed in the past, then it would make sense that we would follow along those same lines.
I, I think it's only fair to the applicant, honestly.
Okay, very good. All right. So that's question number two, I think, Attorney Mann. You had a question about a letter that you wanted removed from the record, so I'm going to direct that over to town council.
No muted. Through the chair to Attorney Mann. You were aware of this request. You've made it more than once, and so I need to respond by asking a question, and that's that, although you've made this request, you haven't cited any case law, statutory law, or other authority that would entitle a board to remove a public comment from the public record during a public hearing. So as I'm sure you know, and, you know, we've done public hearings together before too. Boards typically accept, you know, public comment through, you know, any written form, email. Traditional letter, boards often allow people to speak or ask to be speak, to be speakers at public hearings. And we typically don't review the content of that. If someone wants to submit and they represent they're an interested party during a public hearing, they're allowed to do so. So we don't look beyond the four corners of the document typically, and we accept it, and, and that's the end of it from our perspective. So I would ask you if there's any law or authority you would want us to consider in making that decision. I would welcome you to provide it, and we would take a look at that as well. But simply reviewing it for content and deciding what goes in the record and what doesn't puts us in a very difficult position of deciding which public comments are worthy of being accepted and which ones aren't. So we, we're not in that business, and we don't want to get further down that path. So that's been my advice thus far, but like I said, I'm happy to consider any, any law or guidance from any agency or state or court that you think is relevant, and we'll consider that and respond accordingly.
So, so thank you very much, Attorney Winter. I, I do appreciate that, that response, and I do understand it, and, and I am absolutely not intending for the board to review the content of any public comment or submittal. I'm simply saying that the board ought not ever accept anonymous emails without somebody's name on it, because you can't verify, and we're not able to challenge. That particular correspondence is by a non-existent person. It's completely anonymous. You don't know if they're a resident, you don't know if they're alive. There's no way for me to even contact the person. So any formal public comment has to be able to be dealt with by the applicant, and their defamatory remarks, and quite frankly, they allege criminal activity. And it's being posted on this board's website. So in my opinion, you're actually proffering the continuance of this defamatory statement. Not that if you, if it were done by a public person or a person that was even existing, then I would say you have every right to publish it because that person I can, I can actually counter respond to and contact. I have tried to contact this person, no response. I have looked at the registry of deeds, she doesn't exist. I have searched on the internet, I've searched on the White Pages, I've searched on the assessor's records in Newbury, nothing, she doesn't exist. And that's why you are not supposed to publish comments from people who are, do not exist. That's my, my basis. It isn't the content at all, although the content is what drives the issue. It is more that you're publishing things from people who truly do not exist. That's wrong, and that is never supposed to be part of the record. Unless you can tell me she exists. I, I, my understanding is you, you have no documentation from every other letter you have in the file are documented people and or residents.
Mr. Chairman, you've heard from both of us. I'm happy to debate the issue all night long if you'd like. I suspect you don't want us to do that. So I'll turn it back to you unless you have any further questions from me. You know my feelings on the subject.
I, I do, and I was actually kind of enjoying it because I wasn't in the hot seat here, so it was nice to see two other people sparring, and I didn't have to put on my gloves. So thank you very much, Brian. You know, I, I think, you know, as our town council, we tend to follow the recommendations of our town council. And so being such, Joe, we're going to continue to follow the recommendations of our town council.
Okay, I'll submit case law in support of the withdrawal. I'll do it.
Okay, um, so, um, Martha. The, I'm trying to, what was, what was the term? Joe, what was the term that you used for describing the driveway? Thoroughway?
Travel. I don't know. I, I.
Travel.
Drive?
Travelway.
Travel.
Travelway, yeah. So that was the term that you used to describe the driveways, and, and if I, if I can paraphrase it. You were using that term to explain how fire trucks could pass going up, up and down the, the driveways together in case there was either a fire or medical emergency or some other complication back there requiring emergency services. And yes, I did see, and I think the board did see the, the response today from the fire department, and we were able to appreciate the position of mask code. And mask code does indicate, and does not, mask code does not have a restriction on the length of the driveway with regards to its width. National code does, but mask code does not. So with regards to the width of the drive, you're right, it does adhere to mask code. With that said, you raised something that we've raised, which is what, what is practicality if there is an emergency? And if there is an emergency, and I did have a conversation with the chief today because I wanted clarification from that perspective. He said, yes, there's, there is a, you know, there's a, this is a management problem with equipment going down, equipment coming back, and if anything were to happen to one of the firefighters during the process, and they needed to get someone out, a 10-foot wide drive wouldn't be enough, and your, your descriptor of using the travelway would be appropriate. So basically, what we're doing in that situation is we're using two driveways as one, one means of ingress and egress. So to me, and I'm not an attorney, and I'm going to ask our council for some opinion, and I'm gonna, I want the boards, I thought of this, that's almost coming very close to getting to the concept of a common driveway, even though there's a foot separation, because your descriptor says it can be used to, in an emergent situation. So with that, Brian, I'm gonna come back to you again, and help me and help the board appreciate if we're getting close to the concept of a common drive with this proposed layout of lots as it's, as, as, has been done. And the, again, the concern is the practicality of if there were an emergent crisis, and our concerns are public safety, not only just for, for, for public, for EMS people, and how we handle that, and now are we getting into a very gray area?
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you and happy to respond. So I, I would maybe reframe your question a little bit by moving away from the idea of a common driveway, which is an explicit, you know, per you know, permitting provision within your bylaw and and move the board maybe towards the more practical considerations that are embedded, not only in your subdivision rules and regulations, but in the subdivision control law. And what I'm talking about is 81M. So beyond the technical requirements, so the first thing every subdivision applicant, you know, always is going to look towards, right, are the technical performance standard requirements, engineering requirements, and so on. But stepping back from that a little bit, a board is always obligated and in fact required to examine more generally, public safety components, access, travel components of any, you know, proposed way. And the specific language in the statute is due regard for the provision of adequate access to all lots and subdivision ways that will be safe and convenient for travel. And there are a number of court cases that break that down further into what it means. But I think the what you're getting at behind looking at it is, is this really, you know, you know, a common driveway masquerading as, you know, two travelways combined together? Or is the fundamental issue just that irrespective of technical compliance, there can still be concerns raised and recognized by the board and other town departments as to the adequacy of these proposed ways for safety and travel to access the lots. And those are legitimate concerns. So I think the board can look through that lens and look beyond the the sort of technical requirements and step outside. You don't need to look at those in a vacuum. You can step back and look at those in terms of the the fundamental intent and purposes of your job when reviewing these kinds of of development plans, and that's to ensure public safety.
Yeah. I've I've babbled a bit. So Larry, I'm going to have you, I'm going to pass it down to you first.
No, I agree. In fact, at the last meeting, I think I I made my position, I hope, clear. And it's essentially that I think what I see here is a 700-foot, 20-foot wide common driveway, which after the first significant snowstorm is going to be 18 feet wide, and the second significant snowstorm is going to be 16 feet wide. But what it is, it's form over substance, and I just can't do it any other way. And, you know, consequently, I just don't see this as a valid viable yield plan, notwithstanding the applicant has made heroic efforts to try to technically comply with our statutes and regulations. And I'd like to take it one step further, too, and just offer this thought. Even assuming that the board could be convinced to accept this as a valid yield plan, it doesn't end the inquiry there. And it doesn't certainly doesn't guarantee the approval of an OSRD, at least in this form. And I have very serious concerns about putting 13 units on that front piece based on its location and 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 traffic on high road. So you know, I have, I just want to express that I have a very real concern about density. I'm not saying an OSRD can't work for this property, but I don't think this OSRD is going to work for this property.
All right. Thank you for both points. Thank you, Larry. George, sir.
Yeah, Peter, I concur with Larry in every respect. I had all those notes, and he put up a few more. So I appreciate what he had to say.
Okay. Thank you. Leslie?
I guess my biggest concern is the public safety and the letter that the fire department submitted that they are seem to be still very concerned on the length of the driveways and the widths that at it, the plan doesn't seem to work well for emergency purposes.
Woody?
I agree with everyone that just on the board that just spoke the density, the Larry had a good point with the first no storm, second snowstorm. Essentially, those driveways are common driveway. And the traffic on high road being across tender crop that poses a safety problem as well. So other than that, the concern, the I have a big concern for the safety as as noted, you know, they were on a scene there, and someone got hurt, needed to go out, and there was no way to get back in, no way to get by what was already there for equipment to help them. And that's all I have right now.
So I know that probably isn't what you wanted to hear, Jill.
I would like to respond, though.
Just give me a sec here.
Sure.
You know, the very, the very length of these driveways is a concern. And I was involved in EMS long time ago. And, you know, when you get a couple, a couple, you know, pieces of equipment in an area, and it's confined, it's very difficult to negotiate things. And if, God forbid, there was a fire there and equipment was set up, forget it. It's very, very difficult to negotiate once once things are are set. And it is a 700-foot driveway. And if they have to run lines, you know, that's going to be, I would think, an EMS cluster. I'm not a firefighter. I don't claim to be one. But I think a reasonable person would have concerns with 10 feet to negotiate stuff. And you indicated yourself, it's going to take two 10-foot to make it work. So you've heard from the board. And you've heard from Larry with regards to density. So we can probably go back and forth and slam at each other, you know, and but I want you to hear what the board has said. Because it hasn't been said once. It hasn't been said twice. This is now the third time. And and I'll even bring it a step further back a little bit. You know, we were kind of on the path to the project prior to this most recent modification, where the board is getting comfortable. And we've been thrown back into a scenario where everybody's starting to get uncomfortable again. And that doesn't make sense to this board. We've been we've been slamming this thing. You're now the third attorney, right? That's been on this. And we've heard it a lot. And so what what way can we get to where we need to get to so that something can occur here?
Sure. I mean, I understand. And as far as the other attorneys, I I don't know who the who the first one was. I know Mark very well. But notwithstanding any of that, I just want to point out one thing. Everybody keeps saying that the fire department is concerned about the widths. They we comply completely. As far as access, I do have to put it on the record, Mr. Pecos, because it's not fair to to make allegations that really aren't supportable by the record because I have to establish the record. You know, with regard to the length of driveways, I get it. They're they're long driveways. And that's why the applicant actually suggested and put in that he would use the EPNOR sprinkler systems. And that typically is what the fire departments would want when they're a long driveway. With regard to the ability to my 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 statement that it takes two 10-foot to make it work, that is not what I mean. I'm simply saying that the fire department has the ability to avoid any and all stacking. Not that they don't anyway, because a fire vehicle will simply traverse wherever it needs to go to get through to an app to a scene. But in any event, having a breadth of roadway, legitimate traveled roadway ability of 20 feet is more than anybody offers in the entire town. And you do have other very, very long roads that are single that exceed a normal length, if you will. I mean, exceed 2, 3, 400 feet. I mean, if you look at the projects you approved in, I think it was Livingston, you actually have driveways that are far more lengthy than than what would be considered, you know, the average stacking. And that's that's something you'd approve before. And I understand about the the issue of density. And I think honestly, it might be based on the fact that you'd seen a different plan before, and you were trying to get comfortable with that. But Colby Road and Rolfe Lane, they all have very similar density, as as does Riverview, which is right next door. It's this density is not unusual in your town with regard to OSRD or even in this area. And traffic and 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 safety concerns, that doesn't exist here. And in addition, with all due respect, with regard to the subdivision, 81M controls the roadway. That's the the roadway that's only 480 feet long and is designed in complete accord with your rules and regulations. The sub the actual driveways aren't part of the subdivision approval. That's part of that's part of zoning. That's that really almost has nothing to do with subdivision approval. Those lots are created, but that's driveways are not part of subdivision approval. You just simply have to prove that it's not, you know, access that's illusory, and it's not. So I would just offer that to the board. And again, I understand we're trying to get to a point of go. So are we? I, you know, the board doesn't want 13 lots. I've heard that. You know, the the point of the matter is, is there certain economics in Mr. Shapiro needs to get something out of this property and see they're going to be a conventional plan. It's going to be, I mean, you know, I'm not advancing it. It could be a 40B plan. It could be this plan. It could be so many other things, but that's not what we're proposing. We're proposing the OSRD with, you know, at this point, 12 units, possibly 13 units. And and I would love to be able to discuss that aspect with the board as well. I I don't know how how much more I can say on the issue because the fire department's told you it's safe. The driveways are safe.
The fire department told us that it meets code.
It says
Meets code. And actually, he he used the word that it exceeds code. And and I'm not sure if the exceeding is one foot or two foot. I don't know if the if the code is eight foot wide for a driveway or 10-foot. But and again, you know, if I trucks big, and if it's a foot wide, and the mirrors hang out a foot on the other side, that's 10-foot. So it meets code. But again, practicality is the thing that we have to think about. We have to think about. Could Steve, could you pop up the 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 plans just so everybody can? So as we're talking, everybody can look at the same thing?
Yeah, Martha, you have to allow me to share.
Sure. Just a sec. Where are you? Got it. Hold on. All right, you should be all set.
Try again. There we go. So do you want the, are we looking for the?
I think the
You see that? So that's that?
Yep. And so, Steve, if I understand correctly, there'd be a fire hydrant at the base of that circle. Is that correct?
Correct. It'd be a fire hydrant at the base of the circle. We're actually at, we're actually providing hydrants. There'd be a hydrant at the base at the end of the circle. There would be a hydrant here for these units, and then also another hydrant out at the end. The end of the highways. So not only is, you know, there's hydrants brought out for firefighting purposes.
Yeah, that's it actually makes it a little bit more comfortable, quite honestly, because the the typical water line, I believe, is a one-inch water line, which if you were to to just rely on that for putting out a fire, I I don't feel very comfortable about a garden hose extinguishing a house fire.
So there'd be, yeah, there'd be a full eight-inch line all the way out.
And then, Mr. Pecos, if you'll, if you notice, too, what the what Steve had designed, Steve, I don't know if you can, I'm doing, I'm using my pointer. How silly am I? If you could just show him, you know, the turnaround, which was where the fire trucks can actually turn, and then also how we provided the hammerheads at the end of each of the driveways.
So then at the end. Basically, have at the at the structure, out at each structure, there'd be a full, full hammer, full hammerhead, allowing turnaround, which is highly unusual at many, many long driveways. This is goes far beyond what's required.
And what can be provided along each of these driveways are turnouts at a certain distance so that the fire trucks, to the extent they need to pull over, the fire trucks aren't going to get stuck. But say somebody, they want to pull over for some reason. They could. I mean, that's really the thing is stacking. I don't need, I I try to understand the practical element of this because I understand that's a concern of the board, and I recognize that you're fiduciaries of that. Notwithstanding, I don't understand the stacking comment because the fire truck would actually have to pull over and stop. I don't know why they would pull over and stop at this point. If there were a multiple alarm call or something in that vein, they would, you know, access the homes in a manner in which it's responsible, and they would do that. The only issue would be if vehicle, I don't even, I can't imagine we have a stacking issue comes in, given the size and the availability of a driveway on each side.
Okay, do board members have any other questions or comments at this time?
Yes, Peter, on the filled land to continue the roadways, where's your snowdrop for that? Because you're going to push all the snow off of that and take it somewhere? You're just going to push it over the side into the wetland area?
I mean, I, we would never push it off into the wetland area. So it'll be pushed and then stored on the other properties. Again, Steve, can you show them? I apologize. I just don't have access to the pointer. Steve, can you just show where it would be?
Yeah. So at this area here, there do we be on the land, it would be stored. There'd be an area to store here, or they just pull, push it forward and be stored filed up here.
As long as there's an open space for that. Excuse me. Stacking can occur on the roadways simply because of snow. If a truck breaks down, for example, and takes up one half of that lane, and the snow on the road out to, say, four feet, three feet, the truck may have a problem getting through if it's all ice over it. So that's an issue. It's a public safety issue. Plus, the driveways are fictitiously long. They really are. And I don't know what to do about it, except, Martha, what's the average length of the driveways that have been approved in town? Long ones like this?
I I can't think of any offhand. And I honestly can't think of any as long as these. I'd have to go back and and kind of do a spot check.
One would be Livingston, Ms. Taylor. That would be one to look at.
And I'll just say, you know, Jill, because something had happened in the past, I don't know what the decision-making was in the past for for previous board or with the discussion where that took place. But I do know what the discussions are taking place here. So we have to negotiate and work through all of our discussion points as they've been brought up, because that is our responsibility.
Understood. I just was, you, the question had been asked, are there any, like, what's the average? I just happen to know that those are long and were provided for. I mean, again, I, this is, the intent is not to build the conventional plan. The intent is to build an OSRD. This is an option because what we would get approved would be the subdivision roadway. And then the development of the of the driveways are not prohibited by zoning and therefore are permitted. There's nothing, there literally is no mechanism to reject the length of this driveway. None. It's a building permit only once you get subdivision approval. I the subdivision approval, if you push it, if you wouldn't mind, Steve, just to show them the the road, I just want to make certain. So the subdivision approval is the limit of which is the end of that roadway. I understand for the yield plan, I'm not trying to say it isn't for the yield plan, you need to consider the lots and where they sit. And I understand that completely. And that's why we're trying to show you that these are actually capable of being built and do not violate the zoning bylaws or the regulations as they stand because that's the requirement for the yield plan. But with regard to subdivision control, my plan would literally show that that But with regard to subdivision control, my plan would literally show that that cul-de-sac. And that's the limit of of the approval is to show the cul-de-sac. And that's what eighty-one M and all of the provisions in in chapter eighty-one pertain to is is the safety and access in. True provision of of the roadway within the community. I mean, that's where utilities come from, etc.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions from the board at this time? George, you you. Okay, Leslie?
Uh, no, not at this.
Woody?
No, no, not at this time.
Okay, great. And George and Larry, you're set for now?
Any questions?
Okay, great. I'd like to open this up for public questions at this time. Martha, so if we could, if we could drop down a screen sharing from Steve. Stop. And for any individuals that might have questions, we'd ask that you'd raise your hand using the raise hand function. So that we could entertain questions you might have.
See some people who look like they're looking for it. Catherine has raised her hand physically, Catherine O'Brien.
Okay. And so what we're looking for are new comments or new information that would help us in our decision process. We've heard comments and the board has been taking those in. So Catherine, please go ahead. And I think you need to unmute yourself. You need to unmute yourself, Catherine. So you're going to have to. There you go. So Catherine O'Brien, if you could just identify your your address, please.
Yes, Catherine O'Brien, I live at one oh three High Road, and I am a director butter for one oh five. So I just wanted to address a couple of things about the OSRD that have not been addressed before. And the first one is the primary purposes for the open space residential development bylaws are the following. These are the, these are the primary purposes. Not about the driveways. Number one, to allow for greater flexibility and creativity in the design of the residential development. Well, that's not true. Number two, to encourage the permanent preservation of open space, agricultural land, forestry land. Wildlife habitat, other natural resources, including aquifers, water bodies and wetlands. And historical and architectural resources in a manner that is consistent with Newberry's open space plan. So that's not true. Number three, to encourage a less sprawling and more efficient form of development that consumes less open land. And conforms to existing topography and natural features better than a conventional or a grid subdivision. Well, this is a grid subdivision that they're submitting. And it does fall now that they have the two way in the back there. In a floodplain, I might add. Can't build in a floodplain. Okay. Number. Number four, to minimize the total amount of disturbance on the site. The entire site is going to be built. The entire upland area is going to be built upon. So it won't minimize the amount. It'll maximize the amount of disturbance. Number five, to further the goals and policies of the open spread, open, open space plans. Now, that doesn't seem like it's happening. To facilitate the construction and maintenance of housing streets, utilities and the provision of public services in a more economical and efficient manner. We don't even know if we have water. So the secondary purposes for the OSRD are as follows. Number one, to preserve and enhance the community character. There's no way that this enhance the community character. Number two, to protect the value of real property. It's not going to protect the property. I mean, people, if their house is worth six hundred thousand dollars and there's a three hundred thousand dollar house put in next to them, it's not gonna, it's not going to preserve. Or protect the real property. To provide for diversified housing stock. I assume they're all going to look pretty much the same. To provide open space lands managed for passive recreation, which are accessible to the public. Now, that's rather odd. You don't have a public road, but the public is going to come in and park next to a house and walk out a trail. Filled with ticks, mosquitoes, skunks, coyotes and more. So that is the primary and secondary purpose of the OSRD. And I don't think that's been addressed at all. I think that the plans have had a good looking at. Although I think the plans are very, very poor. They don't give the dimensions, they don't give the side setbacks. I measured some of them. And the setbacks with those houses, they're not twenty feet and they're not ten feet. So I also have a quick question about a fire truck. If the setbacks on the side are ten feet between houses. Someone puts up a fence on the ten feet. So there's, you get ten feet to get by a fence and a house to get to a fire in the back. Okay, special permit will be issued in accordance with. They're calculating the lot, so I don't need to do that. Okay, step four, drawing a lot lines, the standard designs with the with the dimensions. There was not one iron stake. Not one point. Of engineering survey done on those maps. Not one. There's not a stake in the ground. And Arthur covered over the iron, iron pipes that designate the. The boundary with black spray paint. So I can find it again, you just need a metal detector. But the other thing is that. That we need to consider, that we haven't really considered. Is. The the fact that. You've never discussed. The easement that I have. And I'd like to go over that with you because I think it's very important. It actually impacts the road coming in off of High Road. The private street coming off of High Road. And the plans that I've seen are rather duplicitous because they do not identify the easement. And that's one of the requirements for the OSRD, or actually of the entire zoning, for any zoning. You have to identify easements on the property. You have to identify the house next door and next, where it is, how far away it is. And you have to identify the roads that come come close to intersecting with that. Now, none of that has been done. So I'm going to read a part of the easement. Because I know one time some other lady that was on here. She said she hadn't heard of the type of easement that I have. So I'm going to read it to you, not the whole thing. I'm just going to read a little bit of it to you. And I want you to understand that this is, this is what a former owner, Mr. Stan Hope, agreed to. Now, the reason he agreed to it is that. I had a lawsuit against him because he wouldn't let me use the easement. And when he had a buyer for his house. He couldn't close on it because I had an action against it. That's just the way it works. If there's a, if there's a lawsuit against a house, you can't sell it. So he wanted to sell the house and he said, I'll give you anything you want. I said, okay. I want the whole easement. I don't want just my seven feet. I want your seven feet. And I don't want anybody else to be able to use it. Ever. And that's what this says. Stan Hope hereby grants and conveys to O'Brien for the benefit of O'Brien property and the real lots. The appurtenant right and perpetual easement to use so much of the fourteen foot wide historic way. As is located upon the Stan Hope's property. For all purposes which public ways are used within the town. It is agreed and acknowledged between the parties that said right and easement on the Stan Hope's property. Measure seven feet in width. Stan Hope hereby irrevocably and unconditionally waves releases. And relinquishes any rights. Or interest appertinent to claims in the appertinent to the Stan Hope property at one oh five High Road. Burdening or allegedly burdening the O'Brien property or the real lots. It goes on quite a bit. But this has been, this was, this this lawsuit was. Was done at the. This was done at the Superior Court in Essex County. Civil action number two oh two dash one five five, one zero zero five B. And it claims that the easements and the rights between O'Brien's property and Stan Hope's property are, as I've read. Now. The problem with Mr. The Piero and his attorneys and Arthur is that Arthur bought this property at auction. Obviously, he didn't do a title search. If he had done a title search, that would have been very evident because it's, it is referenced in the deed. So. I have, the attorneys that wrote this. Have told me that it is absolutely bulletproof. I had another attorney that did not write it, look at it, and he sent me a letter. Which I had forwarded to you stating that this was an exclusive use to me and to me only. To my purposes. Right now, I have polo ponies that come down to my house for six months out of the year. There about forty-one of them. They have sixteen foot rigs. And then they have an extra large, big, three four, three four, three quarter ton. Exercise pickup. That would be very useful for me to be able to combine that with mine because my my trailers can barely get by. However. I want you to know that I've sent this to the police. I have outlined it to the police, I've spoken with the police personally. Because I don't want to do anything until everyone understands that easement. Now, these plans still use my fence as the boundary. Let me tell you why the fence is not the boundary. Bob Grassel from, he's a professional engineer. He's with, you probably know him, he's from Byfield. When I first moved there, I had him stake my entire lot all the way around. Way in the back, he put monuments and he staked everything. So that I would never have to worry what I owned. Those stakes, when I put the fence up, I put it roughly one to two feet inside my property from the boundary line. Arthur has paved over and then spray painted over it, but it's there. So from my fence to the beginning of my easement. From on Stan Hope's property is about two more feet. Then if you take the next seven feet. From my exclusive easement. That's nine feet. That cannot be considered frontage. It's right there in your bylaws. It's right there, actually, the zoning bylaws for the for building. That every, that the the person that owns the land cannot use an easement. He can't use the land, my my exclusive reason, he can't use the land at all. So I needed you to understand that. I did give it to you before, but I know sometimes it's hard to understand and hard to read. But that's, that is where that easement comes from. Now, let me also add that Arthur has absolutely no proof. That he has any right to use. The two feet and then the seven feet. He can't even drive in his own driveway. So that's where it all came from. It has a little history and it's not something that was just done. It was done in two thousand and five. And it was recorded at the Essex County Registry of Deeds and referenced in my deed and his deed. So someone didn't do their homework by doing a title search.
Catherine, thank you. I I appreciate the sensitivity of the easement issue. Unfortunately, this board doesn't have any oversight with regards to the the easement issue. That's a, that's like a private land dispute.
No, actually, it's right in your bylaws. If you read it, that they cannot use the easement as frontage. It's in your bylaws. And that's why I brought it up. So he cannot use that.
What I will do is I will ask our council to look into that and I'll have our council get get back with a response to that point.
She has, she has all the paperwork too. I sent it to her a couple of months ago. She has all of it.
No, I'm talking about the towns council to help guide this board.
Yes, Lisa Mead. Lisa Mead.
Well, actually, we have her associate, Brian.
Well, I sent it to Lisa Mead, so she'll probably forward it along to Brian. Now, I have one more thing. I have, now, I got one more thing.
Okay.
Jill got plenty of time, so I'm going to take that same amount. Now. You seem to not understand how constructions noise can have a terrible bearing on horses. So I researched it for her and I took this information from the American National Standards Institute. How loud is construction site noise? And how lo, how loud can horses stand? So I have right here a chart. Which shows construction noise and the decibels that they generate. If there was only one house being built, one. And each one of these items were being used, the decibel level would be two thousand fifteen. And that is why this article also said that fifty-five percent of the people who work on construction lose half of the hearing. Because they don't take their ears cover, they don't cover their ears. So then we have. Horses' range of hearing is greater, this is from the British Horse Society, is greater than a human to higher frequencies and lower frequencies. Hearing ability is very important to survival for a horse. And its ears can pick up sounds at a lower volume and a greater distance that will be detected by a human. As humans, there are a variety of sounds that we hear, but horses hear it all. That is their survival technique. Now, knowing that one house and one of these machines generates two thousand fifteen decibels. The decibel level a horse can tolerate is forty-six decibels. That's all they can tolerate. I have a letter here from, let's save my bet. If you find it. And I asked her, I said, Helen, you know, can you write something for me about horses and how they, you know, how they hear? And if it's, if it's possible for them to survive. Oh, no, no, it's right here somewhere. Anyway. My veterinarian, who's been a vet for thirty-five years. Her brother's been a veterinarian for forty years. Her father was a veterinarian for fifty years.
Catherine.
She said, no, I want to tell you. She said that. She said that horses cannot stand noise. They are fight-or-flight animals, and when they're frightened, and when they're afraid, when they see something they don't know, when they hear something they don't know, they're very, very dangerous. They're dangerous to themselves, to anyone that might be riding them, to anyone that's on the ground, to a farrier that's picked up his feet and, and about to do a trim, and there's a big noise next door. That's why death happens around horses, because they're frightened. So I wanna bring to your attention the fact that, um, once again, I'm almost done. The right to firm bylaw. It's not a suggestion. It is a law. If you decide that you're gonna approve in any way, shape, or form this subdivision, you will be in violation of your own law. Let me read it just the small part again. This bylaw encourages the pursuit of agriculture, promotes agricultural-based economic opportunities, and protects the town by allowing agricultural uses and related activities to function with minimal conflict with abutters and town boards and commissions. That means if you, if you choose to ignore this law, you will be in violation of this law, and that is against the law. You can't be in violation. You've taken note that you will uphold the laws, and this is a really important one.
Okay, Catherine.
And I'll just tell you too. Here's the last thing.
Catherine, I have to do a timeout here.
All right, I understand. You've got a lot of time. Okay, so this is on your website. This is on your website. It says that if any discrepancies exist between the print and the internet versions of the bylaws, the most recent version, together with any amendments as maintained by the town clerk, shall be considered legally enforceable.
Okay, Catherine, Catherine, I think, I think the board has heard some of these points before.
Yeah, but I'm, well, see, I never got any feedback, so I didn't know.
Yes, and we're, we're glad that we have the opportunity to hear this. Uh, but we do have other businesses this evening, and I ha, I know that there's other people that wanna speak on, for this hearing. So, uh, thank you for your comments. They're appreciated. If there's anything in writing that you'd like to forward over to Martha, feel free to do that.
Yes, I will. Yeah, I will. And can I ask you to please take all of this into consideration and not just get bogged down with, uh, a, a map that's not right to begin with?
Okay, thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Um, Martha, who do we have next in our queue?
Uh, David Powell has his hand
Great.
raised, asking to unmute himself.
Sure. David, if you can unmute yourself.
Uh, yes, did that work?
Uh, yes, it did.
Okay. All right, so, um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I should give you my actual address, I guess, for the record, and that is 3 Salem Street Apartment 4 Newburyport. And as many of you know, I was for many years a member of the Newbury Planning Board and, uh, was the one of the people who worked to revise our OSRD regulations. I won't go into arguments about units and dwelling units and all the rest of it because clearly my remarks were somewhat misconstrued by the council for the applicant, so I will leave that where it is. I would like to say that, uh, the board's concerns with the whole issue of driveways and fire department access are, you know, so clearly and well-founded, and the kind of refutation that has been presented tonight, I find frankly to be an interesting set of fictions. And I say that as a formal volunteer firefighter in the town of Acworth in New Hampshire. And I don't know whether any of you have been part of a fire crew on a fire. I have to tell you that some of the responses about what's provided and all the rest of it have nothing to do with really what happens when there is a fire. And so, uh, I think your concerns are very real, that essentially those driveways are an interesting kind of fiction, and that they, it's certainly winter time, they wouldn't work to provide the back two lots of this very strange-looking development with any kind of safety whatsoever. So that being said, um, I would urge you to cling to that idea that you're perfectly right, that you should be concerned about that. I have two major concerns I'd like to share with you, which I didn't have in the, the information I sent you recently. And one of them is to simply say that I was concerned to see that the application, now, I don't know what you consider to be the current application because there are a whole bunch of documents on your website. And I don't see there has been any revision to what is sometimes referred to as the, uh, what is it, the narrative that in any way reflects what is currently being discussed in an accurate manner. Um, I, as if, if I were sitting on that board, I would want to have that narrative to be updated to reflect what the plan you are currently actually looking at as a yield plan, and it doesn't. And in fact, it has both missing information and quite incorrect information. Among other things, it implies that there could be some sort of trail link to property, uh, owned by Historic New England. And that is absolutely not true.
Correct.
Okay, in other words, that cannot happen because Historic New England has in fact decided that they don't want to have any kind of trail link whatsoever. And I know that as a, both a member of Historic New England and also having gotten that from, uh, their, their legal department. So I think you would be well-advised to ask why that document, namely the narrative, hasn't been revised in any manner. Also, it doesn't provide the kind of details I would like to see if I were a board member. On top of that, something else has occurred, which has occurred over the years, time and time again, and that is that the plans are prepared. And unfortunately, they don't use the titles for the plans that are required by the OSRD um, bylaw. There is no clear reference to a concept plan, a sketch plan, the whole process, which is spelled out extremely clearly in the bylaw for very one simple reason, and that is so that you can make a graduated series of decisions as to how to move forward. And I think that until such time as you receive those plans correctly marked, instead of as I found, one of their plans was actually, uh, marked as, as an intention, okay, the OSRD site content plan seems to be the best sort of fit I could find. But then there's a plan labeled OSRD twelve-unit lot yield plan. Well, wait a minute. The twelve-unit lot yield plan actually isn't that at all. When you actually look at the plan, it's actually a plan for six lots, right? Six lots with, um, duplexes on it, with two family homes on it. Now, I know we can get into the argument about dwelling houses and units. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about how you label a plan. And that plan was clearly labeled with the hope that, and the intention that it would be for, in fact, a twelve-unit lot yield plan. Now, it doesn't yield twelve lots. Six is, is all I can see there. You may say that's quibbling about numbers and words, but the whole point of this is that it has to be a process which the applicant follows. And if the applicant chooses not to follow it, then it seems to me they really don't deserve the kind of attention that you're having to give them at this point. Okay, my last point would be at this point so far in the process tonight, is that the OSRD has a definition in it of conventional subdivision. And that, and I'm gonna read this because I think it's important. A conventional subdivision is described and defined as, quote, "a development of land subject to and governed by Chapter 117 Planning Board Rules and Regulations for the subdivision of land and any and all rules and regulations established by the planning board under said Chapter 117." Okay, so when you go to Chapter 117, which is the subdivision law, which, um, yes, indeed, the subdivision law only concerns, or majorly concerns, the design of the roadway, which is, uh, what the applicant's attorney would like you to attend to, but it also says under the general heading, that the intent of the standards for design of a conventional subdivision. The intent of these standards, and I'm reading again, is to provide a sound basis for the design of new subdivisions, which will add value and character to the town. And it goes on, and it finishes by saying, "In the planning the project, the applicant shall give due consideration to," and it then mentions three areas. The first is the natural resources and characteristics of the site, including its topog, topography and geological conditions. The second is to the convenience and safety of the public. And the third is to the attractiveness of the proposed streets and the site design. Now, if you look at those general intentions concerning design of a conventional subdivision, I would submit that on any normal sensible person who is not trying to re, essentially re-engineer from a desired number back to some kind of plan, that the plan that is currently in front of you satisfies few, if any, of those demands. It simply doesn't. And tonight, we've heard simply that, yes, um, the applicant needs to do this. Doesn't need to do it. He would like to do it. He wants to do it, but doesn't need to do it. So I think it's important that you pay attention to the words of the bylaw and to the process of the bylaw, as I think you've been doing as a board, and I congratulate you on that. And I would like to simply suggest the applicant also do the same. Because you're not currently, in my estimation. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Martha, do we have any other, uh, individuals who want to make public comments?
Seeing any raised hands, let me take another. I'm not seeing anybody right now.
Okay.
I, I do have a couple of communications that came in.
Okay.
So I'll just note, um, we received, uh, a letter from Eric Towne that came in, uh, the night of the last session of the public hearing, but not in time to be forwarded to the board. We have the communication from David Powell, which he just referenced, and, um, a communication, but from Selena Chandler, who's at 97 High Road.
I wanna go over to, um, Larry. Larry, give me some guidance here on where, what our next step should, should look like.
Well, I, I think we're at an impasse with the, with the applicant, frankly. I mean, you know, I've got here, one, one of the issues, and I'm not intending to get into it right now, but one of the issues that is still resolved was town council's opinion regarding the contiguous open, or upland and open space. Uh, I've got the letter here in front of me, uh, council's opinion. It was dated September 3rd, 2019. Here we are, thirteen months later, we still can't even agree to a, to a yield plan. My suggestion is that we continue this for one more public hearing. In the meantime, I'd like to consider the appropriate form of motion to, uh, I think, terminate this.
Okay.
We, we've been spinning out wheels for thirteen months now.
There is a, a certain degree of fatigue factor and frustration. I appreciate that.
Where are we going with it? We don't get down to it. I mean, the, the board's made its position very clear that we don't accept the yield plan. And we kept, you know, the, the applicant's responses were wrong. Okay, we've got this issue regarding, um, uh, the contiguous open space. The applicant's position is we should ignore what town council tells us. We're getting nowhere.
You didn't say that.
We're getting nowhere.
I, I, I have to contest relative to the open space. We absolutely will agree with Lisa Mead, and we presented a plan showing that open contiguous space. We never said she was wrong. It's her opinion, and tha, that's something that the board has full entitlement to rely upon. We never said she was wrong, and in fact, submitted a plan showing you what the open space would be. That was all. And if that's the indication, then we asked for a waiver to be able to give you more space, not to contest Ms. Me, you know, Attorney Mead's opinion. Never, ever did I do that. I just wanna make that abundantly clear because that isn't the case. And with regard to the fatigue in thirteen months, I don't know what the history is to the extent of the filing of the application. I think it was filed six months ago during COVID, and I understand the fatigue. I too feel it. Um, but if the board does not want to accept the yield plan, that is absolutely within your entitlement to do, you know, and then we'll proceed and file for a conventional subdivision plan if that's what the board so chooses and doesn't want an OSRD. I mean, I'm not, I, I don't know what else to do. I would love to discuss with you the, the, the open space. I would love to discuss with you the, the, um, rights of the community to do certain things. It, it seems like there's a tremendous amount of noise and misinformation relative to this particular process. The, the fact of the matter is, there is a six-unit yield plan filed. Um, that yield plan complies with subdivision control and your zoning bylaws. There is nothing else I can add. And I want to do an OSRD. I want to be able to submit to you an open space that would allow you to preserve the entire backland. You know, Ms. O'Brien was completely erroneous in her positions because she's thinking the open space, and it's not. It's the conventional plan.
Jill, if we want to get to an OSRD, we had a previous plan. Okay, a previous yield plan that we were working on.
You did.
That this board was much more comfortable with. Please listen to the words I'm saying.
Please, go on.
And tha, that was something we were much more comfortable with, and that appeared to be going into a good direction. And then, again, as I said, this curve was thrown, which brought us back to what Larry is alluding to, which was thirteen months ago. So it, it's confusing to the board if we were going in a somewhat positive direction, why we were thrown off the railroad tracks with this approach again. So with those words, I'm gonna ask that you just keep those thoughts, contemplate those thoughts, and hopefully we can get to a, a good discussion point where we can be, be productive and not at an impasse where I feel what Larry has articulated is pretty representative of where most of the board is. And I can do a straw poll right now, and if you want, I can poll, and if you want, we can close it tonight. Um, I don't think you want that to happen. You know, um, because as I said, we're trying to get to a point where everybody can work together.
So, love that too.
Okay, wonderful. Um, Martha, I don't see anybody else out there, so I think, uh, if you wanna pop up your schedule, we can figure out a, a time, uh, if the applicant would like us to continue this, we could continue this for another opportunity and hopefully, um, get, uh,
I'm just waiting, Mr. Pecos, to hear from Mark. I think he's on, but I don't know that he's.
I didn't know that he wanted to speak. Mark, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to know if you wanted to continue.
What's the timing on the contiguous, the continuance?
If you look at our calendar, our screen ahead, you can see where we are with public hearings. So we would probably be looking at the 18th of November.
Not two weeks from now, a month?
If you look at our schedule, you see, Mark, this this hearing typically takes two hours. That's what it's done. It's actually gone longer. And so we tried to be accommodating and let every everyone and all the discussions take place. With that, we have other business. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 other active public hearings, and I think three in the three in the term, three in the in the funnel. So we're trying to be fair to everyone that's trying to do something in this town. And as a result, we have other public hearings that are already scheduled. So the schedule looks like November 18th would be an opportunity for another visitation with us. And I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to let you know what we're trying to negotiate.
Understood.
Shall we continue this till the 18th of November? Attorney. Man.
Mark, are we, are you?
It will continue to the 18th.
So yes, thank you, Mr. Pecos. We'll continue to the 18th in the hopes of finalizing and closing at that point.
Thank you. I entertain a motion from a member to continue this public hearing.
No move.
Okay, so that would be to November 18th at 7:15. Any discussion on the motion? All right, on the motion, how say you, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Chair is in favor. Thanks very much, everybody. Appreciate your patience with this.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, Martha, we'll go back to our unshared screen, and I'm going to pull up my continued agenda here. I think we only have one item left on our agenda. If I am right, let's see, we have old business, which is a follow-up discussion of 17 to 21 High Road, preliminary subdivision plan map, R27 lots 51, 53, 54, 56. Order, Dale Bashford and Carl Brown lots 51.
I don't know what that meant, though. I don't.
So is the, are the folks here for the subdivision plan, I think, is that Scott?
That's Scott.
Hi, everyone. All right. Good evening. Doug Duchesne is also here, as well as Adam True.
Let me do a little muting here. Okay. Very good.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Douglas Duchesne, representing the applicant. With me this evening, Adam True, manager of Gadsden Lane LLC, and Scott Cameron from the Moran Cameron Group. You will recall, we are discussing a preliminary plan. As part of our original filing, we did provide a plan that met all of your subdivision requirements without waivers. However, given the very unique nature of this property and the existing natural features and and the fact that we're only proposing to add four new homes to the area, Mr. True has provided two alternative plans, which he believes would allow him to build a fast superior project, which would protect those natural features that are so prominent on the on the site, including the natural rock formations and some of the mature trees. Additionally, we believe that the alternative developments would allow the project to be more appealing to the neighbors in terms of their views and buffers. And also, it'll be more protective of the environment because we're looking to reduce impervious surfaces and extensive drainage structures, but rather go with more natural drainage and less impervious. Since we last met, Adam has provided you a planting schedule to go with his his landscaping plan. So he has actually identified which plants he would, trees he would propose to use. And he's also continued to work with his neighbors. He has provided all of the neighbors, all of the alternative plans, all of the landscaping and everything we produce. Adam has made sure to deliver it to every neighbor, and he's actually gone around and tried to meet with every neighbor to keep them up to speed and to continue to get their input. So our neighborhood cooperation and informational swapping has continued to be very strong. Mr. Cameron has also provided to you a written document that laid out the differences between the, you know, the conventional design and the two alternatives. And it described what waivers would be necessary in order to move forward with one of those alternative plans. So you have that in written form. Lastly, we did provide a swept analysis to the board and also to the fire department, demonstrating that under each of the plans that we've provided, the conventional, as well as the two alternatives, that we can meet the fire department's access requirements. And again, via the swept plan. And we've given the fire department a copy of all of these of the alternative plans. In fact, Mr. True met with the fire chief today and the fire safety officer and went over the the alternative plans, went over the swept designs. And also, at that time, Mr. True committed to the fire department that he would be willing and has proposed putting residential sprinkler systems in each of the four new homes. So fire departments are usually very appreciative of that, and as was the the fire department today. At the end of the meeting, the fire, the chief and the fire safety officer indicated to Adam that provided we could make meet their requirements in terms of the swept analysis and truck access, that they were comfortable working with us on the alternative plans. And I do believe that the fact that we are going to sprinkle the homes, and there are only four, I think that played in, but it was very encouraging to hear that the fire department would be supportive of our alternative plans, provided we could meet those requirements. So in fact, I would suggest to the board, at the point that they decide to make a preliminary decision, perhaps you would make those a requirement of your decision, that we must sprinkle and that we must satisfy the fire department's requirements if the alternative plans are presented. At this point, Mr. Chairman, we are certainly happy to answer any questions the board has regarding our plans and specifically the alternatives that we have proposed. We are hoping this evening that we could get some direction from the board in terms of where they would like to see us go as far as our definitive design, whether, you know, you want us to stick to the straightforward design that meets all the requirements without exception, or whether you would like us to move forward with the alternative designs, which we feel really could provide a really unique and wonderful project by, you know, integrating all those natural features, while at the same time reducing impervious surface, reducing impacts to the environment, and most importantly, meeting all safety requirements of the town. We, you know, we want this to be a safe neighborhood, but we'd really like it to be a truly unique one. So again, we're happy to answer any questions you have and look forward to your thoughts and direction moving forward.
So Doug, before you hop off, do you have a plan that you want to show us that you would like to stick with? Because we usually don't like to tell people what to do.
Okay, well, I'll ask Scott to put up, I believe, our, and Adam certainly will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we would love to move forward with the third alternative, which was, you know, resulted in the most unique shaped cul-de-sac, again, meeting all the fire department requirements, allows us to place the homes in around some of the rock features and really lends itself to a great landscape design. So Scott, if you could show that plan, and Adam, if you had verified for me, that is the one we were really hoping to move forward on. We can answer the chairman's question. And this, Mr. Chairman, is that plan. As you can see, we have proposed a very unique design on the cul-de-sac, but it does meet the fire department's requirements. It allows us to pull the homes farther away from the back of the lot, which is where the wetlands are located. You can see under this plan, I believe, we're outside of the 100-foot buffer zone, which Scott is highlighting there. So you know, we're being incredibly protective of the wetlands and leaving a large area of open space to the back. We're putting the houses up closer, less impervious surface. And as you can see, the hatched marks around constitute some of that existing ledge work, and you can see this would allow us to put the houses in and around that work, that ledge, without, you know, having to blast it away or chip it away. And it does condense the project, but again, it's, you know, four new homes. It's, it's it's not overly dense. It's, it's, there's a lot of room between the houses. They all have nice yards. Yet it'll create a real neighborhood feel, you know, people will be able to see their neighbors and interact. So Mr. Chairman, this is a plan we're hoping to move forward with, and we can make it meet all of the safety requirements of the fire department and certainly all of the stormwater and environmental requirements of your bylaws.
Okay, so that's what we wanted to hear. This is the plan you want us to to give the nod on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Great for the confirmation. Martha, have we heard from fire yet?
I have not actually heard from fire.
Okay, so we need to hear from fire, but do you have any comments or concerns from our last look at this, Martha? Or anything else that you that you thought of?
Um, no, I think the only only thing or a major thing is they are asking for some significant waivers. It might be worth going through those again, and I don't know if the board needs to commit to those tonight, but, you know, for example, they're they're asking to have a 34 wide right-of-way instead of the required 53 feet. The board in the past, as precedent, has, you know, approved waivers down to 40 feet, so 34 would be narrower than than has been allowed before. I don't know if there was any discussion with the fire department about the proposed one-way around the, you know, the turnaround at the end of the cul-de-sac, and if they had any thoughts about that. And certainly, we'd want to have confirmation that the turning radius is satisfactory to them.
Sure, I certainly understandable. What Scott is showing you here is that swept analysis that shows that the largest of the fire trucks can, in fact, safely maneuver around this irregularly shaped cul-de-sac. We do realize that our request to go down to a 30-foot right-of-way is is certainly new to the board. And in terms of precedent setting, I guess I'd only answer that one of the things unique about this project is it is only for four new homes. There's only four homes serviced by this. So while a wider right-of-way might be more advantageous to a, you know, a 10-lot or a 15-lot or certainly larger projects, 34 feet for four homes is, provides more than sufficient safety factor and and room for plowing and anything, you know, all of that. Adam, I know I was not at the meeting with the fire chief and the fire safety officer, but you know, do you have any comments with respect to what their thoughts were on the 20-foot right-of-way? Excuse me, pavement width?
Yeah, I met with Doug Janvern and Keith today and went over the different options, and they basically said if 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 we can model and we can fit our trucks in that direction, then it will, it'll work. But, you know, any little tweaks or any little tire-off pavement, you know, wouldn't be acceptable. So we took their analysis and we took their tanker truck, which was, I think Keith said, the worst of the turning radiuses, even though it's not the biggest truck from a mechanical standpoint. And that's the truck that we modeled with. We had previously modeled it with the ladder truck. It was the biggest truck, but it doesn't actually have the biggest turning radius. So this is their truck with the largest turning radius.
Yeah, if I could interject just quickly, I know the board doesn't or may not have the expertise in evaluating a swept path analysis, but what you're looking at is what we typically do in the applications is you're seeing, let me get a better pen color here, you're seeing a the edge of pavement for the road you're seeing, and then the different colors represent different parts of the truck that we're evaluating. So we don't only look at where the wheels turn, we look at where the, you know, the overhang of the truck will sweep around because the trucks can have, you know, an eight-foot or more length from the wheel axle to the end of the bumper. And so you're looking at the various lines. So you have your edge of pavement here on each side, and then you have the the green would be your tire path, the red would be your centerline path, and then the orange would be your tailgate. So this would be the rear bumper and the blue, the front is what you're looking at. And really, what the, what we did after Adam met with the fire department today, and they had asked us to look at a different type of truck. We initially modeled the larger ladder truck. That's what Adam presented. Then they had us, they asked if we go back and look at the tanker truck, which is a narrow wheelbase, but it's much longer than the ladder. And in either case, there's plenty of room for the tires to stay on the pavement throughout the whole project. And this this, again, this is the 20-foot width one-way, and this will be the 22-foot two-way, which which meets the pavement width requirement. And I think as we go through a final design, again, this is a preliminary plan. There's a lot more polishing and engineering that goes into the definitive phase, which is why we're here with the preliminary. It's really looking for that direction. So as we do the deep dive into all the technical design, we know we're hopefully engaged with the agendas of the board as far as what they want to see here. This, this we think is a superior plan to your your conventional, I guess, lollipop-style cul-de-sac, which is this guy here.
So I guess what we're looking for is, from the board, is direction generally, and as to what they'd like to see us work on is towards a definitive. And we're, you know, more than happy to make sure that we're constantly working with the fire department to figure out exactly what they need, if there is anything other than what we've already provided.
Okay, so the pear shape is what you want us to comment on?
Yeah, it'd be great.
We don't want to pick and choose and tell you what to do or what not to do, right? Okay, Martha, what are we talking about waivers? So tell me your feeling about the 34, you know?
Well, I know that, I mean, the 53 was based on having drainage swells. It's based on low-impact development, drainage swells on both sides, the possibility of sidewalk, street trees, you know, sort of the everything. Here, I know that Scott's been talking about super elevating the roadway, so the drainage would go off only on one side, so you're not looking at swells on both. They're asking for a waiver on the sidewalk. I do see that there are some street trees there. So, you know, I guess I would like, I personally would like to see that remain open with some, you know, some flexibility in the right-of-way width to make sure that it actually does work for the low-impact developments, no storage, everything else that the right-of-way needs to do. You know, conceptually, I think that this is this is the plan that seems to be, you know, sort of most respectful of the land in terms of working with the ledge-out crops and the slopes and keeping things out of the. the buffer zone for the wetlands. But again, I'd like to, you know, sort of keep the, some of the final dimension things open just to make sure that they actually work. I don't know if the applicant is open to doing that.
We certainly would, Martha. We, you know, in our definitive design, we will start with this. And from there, show you or show the board that in fact, it does provide us enough room to accomplish all of those things that you mentioned that, you know, a wider right-of-way makes easy to do. I do believe that we will be very creative in our landscaping plan. I know Scott has said that he is confident in our ability to do the drainage, the low-impact development drainage stuff within this space. And as you mentioned, the super elevation of the roadway, given that it's such a small roadway, will allow that. But certainly, obviously, if we design the definitive with this and we're not able to meet those standards, we better make sure we have room to widen it without having to start over. So if that's what you mean, yes, we are certainly understanding of the fact that if we're not able to satisfy all of the board's requirements and the fires, the safety requirements with this right-of-way, that we will be required to widen it. And I mean, I think that's a, not so much a risk, but a, you know, an effort we're willing to take.
Right. Let me kind of get a feeling from the board as to what their thoughts are. Larry, do you have any thoughts or concerns?
Well, you know, when I first saw these alternatives, the one that frankly appealed to me was alternate number three. Having, you know, gone on the sidewalk, I think I can see why it would be visually more appealing, if nothing else, and other advantages as well. My second inclination was, well, can a fire truck make that ninety-degree turn in that you've addressed or are addressing? And that's something would be important to hear from fire. And I think we do have to be careful about waving, going below a forty-foot right-of-way. I mean, that's, if you can find three feet on either side, I think it might make our task a little easier. But I like where you're going with alternate number three.
Okay, thank you, Larry. George? Oops, you're muted, George. I don't know if
I was, I was muted. I'm sorry. I like this plan. I think it works well. Again, with Larry, I would like to see a forty-foot right-of-way for all number of reasons, but I think everything else works.
Great. Thank you, sir. Leslie?
Of the three designs, this is the one I think is the most appealing for the site and having gone on the web, on the sidewalk as well. It's an interesting piece of property and but I think too, I agree with the forty-foot measurement, just and, yeah, like three feet on either side could possibly be worked out pretty easily.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Woody, sir?
I like this plan. It's, it, being on the sidewalk, it does, as everyone's reiterated now, it does fit with the outcroppings and it's less of an impact on the site as far as removing a ledge. So I think option three works well with the way the site's laid out. And as far as the right-of-way, I agree with everyone else as well. A minimum of forty feet would work, would be what we'd want to see. And other than that, that's it for now.
Okay, great. Do we have any public comment on this, Martha? Do you see anybody that is looking to be recognized?
I'm not seeing any raised hands. No, nobody's waving, no blue hands.
So this is a question I have to Adam. When we were on the sidewalk, I noticed that there were a couple of homes that had not yet had conversations with you. Have you had conversation with those couple of neighbors yet?
So I did canvass the two, which would be four and six, Bayview, I believe, four, six, eight. Eight Bayview. The woman that I met was just recently had, I believe, lost her father. And so she did, she did get a set of plans, but she said she wasn't very concerned with anything about it because she lives in the South Shore. And then I tried to contact the other two and I'd left them pamphlets, but no interaction. Still, still nothing from those two homes.
Yeah, I encouraged conversation with those folks because I did see them looking at us as we were on the sidewalk. So they had some curiosity for sure. So that might just help alleviate any potential concern. So I'd encourage that conversation. So what I'm kind of hearing from the board is that they're kind of comfortable with this concept that has been proposed by the applicant with the understanding that maybe we can get that thirty-four to a forty. And we want to make sure that it's comfortable with fire. If that is the case, and Martha, if you're comfortable with this, we could potentially approve a preliminary plan and concept, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I think, I think approving, approving this direction with the, you know, the concerns, considerations that have been raised about fire and revisiting the right-of-way.
Okay, so we would like to kick the ball off.
Need a motion?
Please?
Yeah, do we, Martha, can we just move it as discussed or do we need to recite those particular concerns?
I think it could probably be moved as discussed if you all are comfortable with that. You know, the written, the written approval is pretty, pretty short and sweet, but those would be listed.
All right, so I would so move.
Thank you, sir. Sir, second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Larry, how, how say you?
Yes.
On the motion?
Yes. Yes.
George, thank you, George. Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yeah.
Okay, and the chairs in favor as well. Okay, so would we like to look at a, would we like a meeting or do what, want to just go down the path and see how things go, Martha?
Mr. Chairman, I, oh, I'm sorry. Were you asking me?
Well, I can ask anyone. Go right ahead, sir. I was asking the town planner, but you know, I figured you'd
No, I saw, I apologize. I'm just a little excited that we're going to get to move forward on something we really believe in and look forward to showing the board just how great this can come out. So with that, with what you've given us tonight, we're ready to move forward. So if you want to meet with us again, we'll be happy to meet. Otherwise, we're just going to go do our work. Get you a definitive plan.
Let me get back to Martha. How's that sound?
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Excellent. Gentle people, thank you very much. We appreciate your participation this evening.
Well, thank you and the board for your time and consideration. Have a nice evening.
Great.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. New business, I see the word none next to that. Is that correct, Martha?
That is correct.
Right. September financials, twenty minutes behind the times. How are we doing? Okay, thank you very much, George.
Thanks, George. Do you want me to share the financial report?
You could.
Can everybody see that?
Yep. So payroll warrants for town planner and planning administrative PR twenty-one dash oh-six for pay period ending nine slash twelve slash twenty twenty, PR twenty-one dash oh-seven for pay period ending nine twenty-six slash twenty. Planning board expense invoices, again, the Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad of nine twenty-nine twenty and peer review invoices. Escrow account for Joe Suwaka, One Week Main Street for nine twenty-one twenty twenty. Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. And let me get back over to the agenda and continuing on our agenda, town planners report.
Not, not too much here.
Good, we're picking up time, I like that.
Well, I hate to tell you guys, but I'm having, I've been asked to meet with somebody else to discuss a potential subdivision at Southern Larkin Road.
Okay.
So that will probably happen on Monday. Tomorrow morning, we have a pre-construction meeting with Bill DiFrancesco to review the no-cut boundary and and the schedule. And I sent you all the, the information about the CPTC workshops and the bonus one regarding wireless. So again, I'd encourage anybody who is at all interested and has the time to attend the wireless one in particular, since that's something that we've been working on and any of the others that look interested. And there is money in the budget to reimburse the registration fee.
And that was yesterday. And what was the date on that?
The wireless one, I think, was the twenty-first, I think, of November. I'm not, I don't remember. Actually.
Okay, good, good.
And
Bless you.
I think that for now, we will have to look at public hearing dates for the two site plan review applications that came in. At the last meeting, one of them will have to be coordinated with the select board because it requires a water supply protection overlay district special permit from them. And that's the three Newburyport Turnpike. It's going to be, the application for that is going to be submitted to them at their next meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh.
All right, very good, very good. So that concludes the talent plans report. Select board report. Leslie, big highlight.
Select board report. They appointed William Demio to the Veterans Grave, as Veterans Grave Officer. They tabled the Plum Island Turnpike parking situation for another month. Let's see. There were some applications from Georgie Porche about doing like a craft show and things like that, but Chief Lucy wants to look into stage two a little bit deeper before that kind of goes. And they are still working on the parameters of citizens' concerns. The PEG access follow-up has been tabled with suggestion of outside counsel. And the emergency evacuation route on Fourteenth Street would have to open, that, that would have to open up to Old Point Road. So that's when the the center floods and for evacuation reasons, they can't get the emergency vehicles down. So they'll try to get that open on Fourteenth Street. And Ben from Concom gave a presentation that, as we saw on the the opening up the what is it? The fish? I'm getting tired. I'm sorry.
Was it the road dam, the fish ladder and thank you. At least having a feasibility study.
And that's about the bulk of it.
Great, great. Thank you, Leslie. ZBA?
The ZBA held its regular monthly meeting last Thursday, and one item on there that might be of interest to to our members here was Seacoast Canine. If you recall, the doggy daycare on Downfall Road. They were before the ZBA on an appeal from the building commissioners determination that the activities there did not constitute a customary home occupation. Board heard evidence. I think you can probably all imagine much of what was said. It was pretty much a repetition of the type of testimony that we heard here. And anyway, they didn't make a decision. They continued it for further for further hearing. And tomorrow night is their special meeting on the Cricket Lane forty-B project. So that's, once again, a continued hearing. That's about it.
What time is that one, Larry?
I'm sorry?
What time is that meeting?
Seven thirty.
Okay.
Seven thirty Zoom meeting. And of course, it's all posted.
All right. And Larry, I think tomorrow night, they're focusing on wetlands issues. Is that right?
You, yes, I think you're right, Martha. Yeah. Yeah, they decided that they would take discrete subjects for each of their continued hearings and
Good way to divide it up.
Yeah, it is actually. It is, makes good sense.
Well, thank you very much, sir. MVPc?
I actually, nothing new on MVPc. We're having a planner's meeting tomorrow, so.
Okay, Concom, Concom met last week when we had our combined meeting, so I couldn't attend that. Then last meeting, last night, they met. The emergency access was probably the most pertinent component, and that was discussed. And it just so happened that yes, yesterday, they had a fire which would have been helped if it had gone any longer, would have been helpful to have a different access component because that road would have been obstructed. But fortunately, it was a short event. So it was interesting how that dived up tilt. I think that's pretty much the highlight that would relate to us. Oh, the solar, the solar plan for the transfer station, or I'm sorry, for the dump, was discussed. And so that's working its way through the channels as well. So that was conservation.
Was there any decision on that one, on the solar, on the landfill?
I think, yeah, I think it was pretty much, trying to remember, because it was getting into the wee hours by the time we got to that one. I think we were three and a half hours, three hours into that meeting. Let me see if my brain right now can focus in on that. It was pretty, pretty, pretty smooth sailing because, you know, it's already, you know, a site that's a disturbed site. So from the get-go, your, your, you know, conservation is a little off-kilter. So I think it was, there weren't any big, big issues. There was a concern that the river was pretty much adjacent. And so there was some discussion about that, but I think everything was pretty much smooth sailing. Yep.
Well, thank you.
Good. Any other business we need to talk about this evening? Oh, oh, I'm seeing head shakes. I love that. That's, that's a good sign. Well, folks, I appreciate your patience tonight for the board, for people watching and visiting. Thank you very much. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. Any motion, any discussion on the motion? I don't see any by board members. How say you, Larry?
Yes.
Woody, how say you?
Yes, sure.
Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
The chair is in favor very much. Thank you. Thank you. And Martha, thank you as well. And Brian, thanks for sticking with us.
Good to see you again.
Good night, Emily. Bye-bye.
Night, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.